This week here.
All.
Thank you.
Hello, Joe Mellon.
Hello, Jane Canty.
How we doing, pal?
Ah, hold today and got nothing. There you are.
There we go. There we go. Somebody just told me that Marcus Smart was down at Kelly Greens.
What?
Yeah.
Have no idea.
Yeah. I don't know why.
Took a wrong left turn.
Huh?
Took a long, a wrong left turn again.
Well, somebody said it was had to do with Conservation Commission business. Maybe he's buying the golf course from the town. Let's start a rumor. How'd you make out on your trip? I saw you on that lobster.
Zero.
Yeah, it's slow, huh?
Oh, yeah. No, no shots. Which is very.
No, but it's funny. They're starting to use different techniques up in Maine to spot white sharks. Under underwater sound.
Yeah, bone up bodies. They have a lot of the sharks marked, so they send out signals.
Right, exactly. And I want to see them here.
Well, keep the sails away and we'll be fine.
We'll make you the official shark hunter. You don't want that, though?
Ah, I'll, I'll give it over to my stern man, Mark Skag. I took him out today.
Oh, did you?
That's probably why I got zero.
How is Mark?
Breathing.
Now, his son's a lobsterman, isn't he?
Ah, yeah, Stephen. And his other one works for Tim, his son Mark works for Timmy O'Keefe.
Okay. Where is everybody?
Only Mark is here so far.
Hey, Mark.
You have to unmute him.
Uh, I'm not in techno- technologically sound, so.
Ask him. Mark, could you unmute yourself?
Mark, you there? Tony?
Not on the board yet.
That's early. Is that your wallpaper?
Yep.
What is it?
A Christmas story. The famous leg lamp.
Oh, that's right, too. Wrong time of year, Joe.
Yeah, I gotta find some new pictures.
Mahomes out in Colorado.
Yeah, we know.
He sent me a picture yesterday. He caught about thirty brown trout.
Well, we better freeze him and bring him back as bait.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I made a comment like that to him. He said, put him back.
It's cost him about a, ah, one, a buck of fish head.
You know what? When I had traps, I had like twenty-five out years ago back in the eighties. And I used to go over to Legal Fish Market in Inman Square in Cambridge. And I'd pick up two buck, two five gallon buckets of fish heads, cod heads. And they charged me a dollar a bucket.
Those days are long gone.
Those things would last a week. Or you could go get them from Cosmo Kanabuchi. Down in Irish Town.
I don't use fish anymore. Animal skins.
Oh, do you?
Last three weeks. They're good for about three weeks before I have to refresh them.
What are they?
Animal skins. Hides.
Hides.
Oh, Josh is here. At least his forehead is. Oh, there's a wreck of them.
That's a jerk. Hey, was, was Marcus Smart really down at Kelly Greens?
That's what I heard. I didn't go down to verify. Oh, yeah, Tony saw, Tony said he saw him down there.
No kidding. Hey, what did you mean by delegating?
Well, um, you, you wanted to have Mark and I do some of the reading?
Yeah.
So, um, if you wouldn't mind just saying, I'm gonna delegate the reading of the announcements to Josh, or I'm gonna delegate, you know, just so, uh, you know, because it's customary for this chair to do that, but, you know, just so people know that
Okay.
you're still the chair, but, um, make us do the dirty work.
Lord of you.
Yeah.
Did you, did you by any chance get one of those coyotes with the shoes?
I, I missed, but, um, you know, I came running around the corner full speed and he took off as fast as he could run. So, um, yeah.
Call it, call it the antrum technique.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it, I mean, what I'm concerned about is them getting used to, uh, you know, noises and whatnot, because they do live in cities and stuff. Anyway, I guess we'll, um, we'll talk about that stuff shortly.
Hello. Tony? Was he really there?
Oh, yeah.
Was Marcus Smart really there?
Yeah, he was.
Did you ask him to stop taking three pointers?
I, I was kind of, I kind of said like, let's go game six, you know, like, let's get ready, bring it home. Um, and then like this huge crowd of kids and people were coming in. He was clearly like trying to get some, you know, be away from the crowds, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's why he likes coming here, but, um.
Trust me, I know what that's like, getting mobbed by the crowds and everything.
What, what was the purpose? What was the purpose of his visit?
I don't know. It certainly wasn't shooting free throws, which is what he should be working on right now.
Him and, him and Tatum.
Um, I didn't recognize really anybody else that he was with. But, um, I happened to be down there meeting with the Concom and, uh, and the, and Brett and the golf committee about some things that, uh, they're looking to do at the golf course and, um, I was parked by happenstance, like a car over, and when I was leaving, they were getting off the course, so I gave him a quick, like, get focused, game six is important comment and got out of there.
That's interesting. I wouldn't think they'd be out doing recreation with, with that bigger tournament in front of them.
That's, you know, that's what I mean, but, yeah. It's a long season, you know? If you're not ready now, you're never ready. So I think, you know, get a little away time from, from it isn't bad either.
Hey, Tony, I don't have Josh's technological background here to shift these screens back and forth. So who's going to do that? Josh or yourself?
Shift the screens?
I, I usually share the screen when it's, when it's needed.
Okay, good. Are we, we all set?
Uh, we are. Yes, we're live streaming now.
All right, welcome everybody on June the fifteenth, Wednesday for the Board of Selectment meeting with myself as chairperson, just to announce the changes. Mark Collinett is Vice Chairman and Josh Anderson is the Recording Secretary. Going to do a little switch in the, uh, process tonight. I'm going to, uh, I'm going to ask if Josh would continue to do the opening comments and the announcements and that Mark do the new business. So if that's okay with you guys, we can begin with opening comments. Are there any out there?
Um, sure, that, I can do that. Happy to do that. Um, oftentimes we'll read the, the written ones and then, um, ask around the room if anybody else has any other comments. So I'll just proceed, um, as we typically do. So opening comments, uh, 2022 resident parking stickers are available for purchase at Nahat.org. Stickers are $10 each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and the census must be completed. Um, compost area, compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. The 2022 resident sticker is required. Visit the Public Works Department page at Nahat.org for a list of accepted materials. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers, et cetera, is the last Saturday of each month from eight AM to twelve PM noon behind the DPW garage at Flash Road. A 2022 resident sticker is required. Certain fees may apply. Visit the Public Works Department page at Nahat.org for accepted material. Nahat Town Hall is seeking a college-aged student for a paid part-time internship. Send the cover letter and resume to kaytaylor@nahat.org by June thirtieth, 2022. Visit nahat.org for a full job description. Um, the farmer's market is returning. The markets will be on the following Saturdays from ten AM to one PM. Um, July sixteenth, August twentieth, it's September seventeenth at the Flash Road Park. Vendors need to fill out applications, submit with a fee to kaytaylor@nahat.org. Visit the farmer's market page at nahat.org for more information and application. Volunteers are also needed. So that's exciting news. Uh, that was a big hit, the one that was held last fall and it's nice to see that we'll have three over the course of the summer. Um, Town Hall will be closed on Monday, June twentieth, 2022, in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Um, any other opening comments, Gene or Mark?
Um, none. I just want to say, um, Josh, that, um, I think this is our first meeting since the passing of Marty Lucantonio. And again, on behalf of the town and the Board of Selectmen, uh, I want to extend, uh, condolences to the Lucantonio family. And the heart will certainly not be the same without his presence. Um, he was certainly an icon for the town and will be sorely missed. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that, so.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, thanks for thinking of that. That's just so true. Great guy.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And I, on a, on a lighter note, um, I noticed that a resident was featured in the Lynn item today. Uh, Mr. Cole Hammerneck. Um, would you like to give him any shout out?
Uh, it's my nephew. I, I can't say it's genetic, so. Um, but he was awarded a couple pretty good awards, um, this past week. One was the MIAA Student Athlete of the Year for the state of Massachusetts. And the other was a heavy again, it's Athlete of the Year. So, uh, anyone who knows Cole and his family, uh, his mother, Reenie, um, uh, my niece, uh, yeah, his father, Scott, they're great parents and they raised a great kid and, um, uh, he's off to, uh, study, uh, he does take after me a little, I guess. He's off to Colorado College of Mines to study civil engineering, so, um, I'm sure he'll do great at that. I'm sure he'll do great at that.
That's awesome.
That's great. Congratulations to him. Um, it's great to see uh, Nahat being represented by by our youth in that fashion. You know, it's not just sports, it's also academics, so um, great job by him.
So it's a big award.
Um, I had two other things if I could, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Town Hall is the, uh, sixth grade graduation for the Johnson Elementary School. So congratulations to the, uh, graduating class. And on Friday at noon, we, and I'll I'll post this online, but we will have a ribbon cutting event at Flash Road Park for the new basketball and tennis courts.
It's exciting.
Yes, very exciting. They look great.
I'm sorry, Tony, I just lost you there for that whole conversation, but we can pick up on it later.
Yep. I just said 6 o'clock tomorrow night, Johnson Elementary School, uh, sixth grade graduation at the Town Hall. And I said on Friday, we're gonna have it at 12 o'clock at Flash Road. We're gonna have a ribbon cutting for the Flash Road Basketball and Tennis Courts.
Well, I'll be there, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, Mark.
Um, Joe, new business, um, this item on our new business is a vote to approve some bonds and I guess I'll make I'll make that motion. It's a it's an anti-legal one, so bear with me. Um, so actually, Josh, you should probably make this because it's a clerk.
Um, oops, I pressed the wrong button. Um, yeah, um, right. Oh, it's the long one. Yeah. Um, so this is a very long, uh, motion. Um, um, I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Nahat, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held June 15th, 2022, of which meeting all members of the board were dutifully notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. Uh, voted. Um, this doesn't sound like a motion, by the way. Am I doing this appropriately?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I will.
I don't have in front of me, Josh, like.
Um, voted to approve the sale of 1,982,955 dollars, um, 3% Series A General Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes, the Series A notes of the of the town dated June 24th, 2022, and payable June 23rd, 2023 to BNY Mellon Capital Markets LLC at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $15,832.71. Further voted to approve the sale of 3,092, excuse me, 3,92,148 dollars, 3% Series B General Obligation One Bond Anticipation Notes, the Series B notes, and together with the Series A notes, the notes of the town dated July 7th, 2022, payable July 7th, 2023 to Oppenheimer and Company, Inc., at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $27,149.06. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June 3rd, 2022, an official statement dated June 7th, 2022, each in such form as may be adopted by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver significant events, disclosure, undertakings, in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12, in forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which respective undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the applicable notes for the benefit of the holders of such notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters related to thereto having the same legal effect as original, excuse me, as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and they're hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certified that the votes were taken at a public open, excuse me, at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken by secret ballot that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which the agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the school building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 to be at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in an executive session all in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, subsections 18-25 as amended dated June 15th, 2022, and to be signed by the clerk of the Board of Selectmen. So you did?
Motion made and seconded discussion.
Yeah, Josh, I didn't quite get that. Could you read that again, please?
Yeah, I, okay. I might have mispronounced one of the words.
Allison, Allison, our finance director's on the call if you have any questions about that vote.
I have no questions. Thanks, Allison, for putting this together. I know how much work it is.
Yeah, so this one was a lot of work this time around because it includes all the new borrowings for everything that was approved at last year's town meeting. Um, so the town treasurer and I had to put together, and the town clerk put together a lot of documentation for bond counsel for this one.
It shows.
Okay, motion was made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, mine.
Mark, all right.
Jean Canty, I.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Uh, let's see, I'll take over from here. I move, uh, we have an appointment here. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Michael Schultz as a the hard reserve police officer.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Looks like, um, Tim Furlong's on the phone. I don't know, Tim, if you wanted to add anything?
Trying.
All right.
I I don't really have much to add otherwise, other than, uh, Mike Schultz is a 20-year veteran of the Essex County Sheriff's Department. He's a captain up there. Uh, he also contributes to the town as a assistant harbor master. So, uh, he's trained as a reserve officer as of now, so to me, this is a an easy no-brainer.
Yeah, I agree, chief. Um, Jeff, Mike will do a great job. So, um, is he is he able to take orders from his brother?
Well, we'll find.
Able or willing.
Yeah.
Really, uh, yeah, it'd be great to have, uh, Michael, um, as a reserve officer, for sure.
Thank you.
I I don't know Michael personally, but I hear a lot of great things about him.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Member of the 1973, um, Nahat Champion Giants Little League team. For you. Second base.
Motion made and seconded discussion. We had a roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, mine.
Mark, all right.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen minute a meeting minutes from March 16th, 2022, April 6th, 2022, and April 20th, 2022.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, mine.
Mark, all right.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request from the Nahat Public Library for the Through Me To You, uh, puppetry show on July 12th, 2022 at the Town Hall starting at 10:00 AM.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, just to. What day? What day is the 12th? I hope it's a Tuesday. So I can bring all my kids up. Whatever, I'll find.
It is a Tuesday.
Oh, perfect. I had nothing to do with that.
All right. Well, um, you should also know that the show will be held inside in the case of inclement weather. Otherwise, it will be at the Flash Road Playground.
Okay, motion made and just and seconded. Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, mine.
Mark, all right.
Jean Canty, I. Ongoing business. We've got, uh, several reasons to continue with ongoing business, the first being nine Little Nahat Road. And I spoke with Tony today about this, and he's going to give us an update along with Dan. If if the two of you would, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have, I don't, I, we haven't really had, provided a public update on this for quite some time, I think, prior to town meeting. Uh, so I apologize to the residents that have been, you know, wondering what's going on. Um, we, we, uh, were approached, um, by the, um, selling party, which I think Dan is the appropriate, you know, the estate appropriate way to refer to them.
Yep.
Um, who had received a, um, a decent offer for the property. Um, and so they wanted to uh, they wanted, you know, HUD and the town in the heart to, uh, engage in a conversation and negotiate on the issue of the town being owed deferred taxes versus HUD being owed um, their reverse mortgage amount. Uh, the the offer provided to the, uh, selling, the selling party, uh, does not, is not enough to repay both the town and HUD completely. Uh, so, you know, we had, um, a few conversations back and forth with HUD. Um, that that's what the Board of Selectmen and I and Dan were meeting about in, uh, executive session as we were negotiating, uh, with HUD some sort of, um, dollar amount to avoid having to go to litigation to argue about how much money the town should receive from the sale versus how much money HUD should receive from the sale. I think that we, we, um, were able, there was a lot of back and forth. It wasn't a very easy negotiation. Um, but ultimately, you know, I think that the town presented a very fair um, thought out equitable, uh, split of the purchase price. And we were able to, you know, stand on that ground and negotiate a very good number for the town. Uh, a number that is significantly higher than the principal amount of deferred taxes owed to the town. So not only if this, if the current deal, uh, goes through, not only will the town recoup um, the um, the principal amount of deferred taxes, but we will also recoup a significant portion of the penalties, fees, and interest that was layered on top. Um, after coming to that agreement and presenting it to, uh, the selling and the selling and buyers, uh, the selling party, the estate, um, knowing that there was a leftover amount owed to the town and a leftover amount owed to HUD requested that both HUD and the town waive those remaining amounts in order for them to uh, sign the contract of this, um, purchase and sale. And we, the town, uh, don't have the authority to do that unless the Department of Revenue provides us that authority. So we explain that, um, to the buyer and seller that that's the process we would have to take, that we didn't, we didn't, um, we didn't have a big issue with waiving the rest of the amount, the rest of the amount, but that we needed DORs okay. And that that process, you know, could take time as we heard from the DOR. Um, and it's not a definite. Uh, otherwise, if DOR doesn't, if DOR, uh, if we didn't apply, or if we apply and DOR doesn't approve it, then the town is actually held responsible financially for the remaining amount. So that could, you know, that's a, that's a risky position for the town, uh, that we were not, we were not willing to uh, agree without DORs okay. So we've submitted, uh, both the buyer and the seller understood they're both okay with however long it might take. Um, and we've submitted the application to the DOR. Um, and we've reached out a couple of times. They they were looking for some supplementary supplement uh, supplemental information. They've gotten that and we're still waiting on a response. So that application has been with DOR for um, a few weeks, I would say. I don't know.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. And they originally had said about a month, I think, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we're hoping we're hoping that we hear back and we are hoping it's a an approval, um, you know, sometime in the next week or two.
Tony, I've been, I've been asked by a couple of people whether or not this is under agreement. And I'm I'm asking Dan, would this be considered to be under agreement?
No, there's just an offer out there, uh, and the offer is pending based on the response from DOR. So there's not, it's not really under contract yet. I'm not quite sure. You know, I think you're looking at a website, maybe. Um, it also said something about 1.7 million, and that's also inaccurate. Um, so I wouldn't go by what the website says, uh, or even what any sort of placard says at the property. Uh, Tony described it perfectly. Uh, we did everything we could as quickly as we could. I want to emphasize that, as quickly as we could. So the wait now is on DOR and, um, we're waiting just like everyone else is.
Okay, it 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 shows, it shows in MLS as it being held up for a contingency. Is that Is that contingency what we're talking about right now?
You know, Gene, I don't know, I don't know the MLS vernacular. All I can say is Tony described it perfectly, and to me, that would consider it, be considered a contingency. I'm not quite sure how the realtors use that term.
Yeah, I don't either.
But it would make sense if that would sort of fall within that umbrella.
Now, let's not to say. One more, one more piece, too. We were, I was asked by a resident if we could include other considerations in the negotiated deal. For instance, regarding the future use of the property. And I, I did submit that request to Dan, and unfortunately, that's not an allowable introduction to the negotiated amount on the pass due or deferred taxes.
Dan, do you?
Oh, absolutely. Part of this deal is contingent, as I mentioned, to use Gene's word, upon the DOR approving the abatement, and they do that when the tax is uncollectible or the situation is so unusual that it merits a second look, and that's exactly what this is. So we couldn't add into that. First of all, we have no control with the seller dust. Let me just say that. We can't tell the seller what to do. They gave us the benefit of a buyer, so that's a very good thing they did for the whole town. Because without that, we were left with the auction through HUD, which likely would have gotten nothing more than what they were owed to leave the town out, not penniless, but not nearly as much as the town stands to get if this deal goes through. So to put an application for an abatement out there saying that, well, the sale is is contingent on a buyer not creating, you know, a forty B or a Airbnb or something like that, that would not bode well with the DOR in my expectation. And that would lead to them saying, no, that's not really why the abatement process exists. So try again. But that being said, we're not even close to that because we have no control with the buyer dust. I'm sorry, the seller, seller, the seller does.
And I'm being asked in the chat, what, what is the buyer's planned use? We don't know. We don't have, you know, any information about that. And that's, I think, why the request came in from the resident about potentially including language in the abatement request, or as a part of that negotiation. But we can't include it as a part of that, as Dan just mentioned. So we do not know, you know, what the future use is at this time.
And I kind of point out, Tony, no matter what the buyer says, they're not bound to it. They can say we're going to refurbish it back into a single family home. They can say whatever they want right now. At the end of the day, once they buy it, they're not bound one way or the other outside of our zoning laws.
Exactly.
Just, I, I want to take a minute to publicly acknowledge the really outstanding job that Attorney Scrip and Tony, Town Administrator, did on behalf of the taxpayers of of Nahat in reaching a negotiated solution here. The initial offer from HUD was ten thousand dollars and you know, through hard work and perseverance and with the support of the Board of Selectmen, that not only we recover all our principal, but very nearly all the interests and penalties involved in this. So really well done job, Attorney Scrip and and administrator on behalf of taxpayers of the heart.
Thank you.
No, it wasn't easy. Lot of back and forth, but hopefully the, you know, taxpayers appreciate all the hard work.
I, I'd like to add to, I'd like to add to that. I think our internal discussions amongst all of us, particularly Tony and Dan, is tantamount in us getting the return that we expect to get on this sale.
But just to make clear, we're waiting on DOR. If DOR says no, that sort of throws a wrench in the work. So it's, so the deal's not done by any means, but we're certainly way down the path, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Tony, you know, I've, I've asked this question, and we can probably discuss it at a later time off screen, but, you know, as, as you said, DOR, if, if DOR doesn't give us a waiver for the amount, for the full amount owed, then the town would be on the hook for the, the difference between what we got and what we are owed. I'm not quite sure what that is.
Well, I think, so I think that if DOR were to, if DOR were to deny it, and the sale were to, and let's say the seller still, you know, wants to go through with it. I think our next, our next action would be to go after the estate for the remaining amount. And if that were to be proven, you know, if that were to be proven to be, you know, we weren't able to recoup any funds after trying to go after the estate, I think we could probably submit another application. And then DOR, you know, we've exhausted every option at that point. And then if DOR were to deny it again, yes, according to the folks we spoke to at DOR, it would be the town actually appropriating free cash to itself.
That's, yeah, I, I just don't get that, that accounting. It's like, you know, so we pay ourselves, we pay ourselves through free cash, all available funds, and then that money goes into the general fund, and then the town can reappropriate that anywhere it wants.
Well, I think yeah, or, or it's reduced, or our free cash, our total free cash amount that gets approved is just reduced by that amount before.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it's still there. Still there. I mean, it's sort of like a shell game. You know, it really is, and I, I don't know, maybe, we can talk about it later. I know, I know that Allison is looking into that. I asked her that question. I don't know how you pay yourself, and then.
Really strange. I agree.
Very strange. Okay, discussion for another day. Let's see what DOR says.
Yeah.
Any more?
I know our assessor, Sheila Hamilton, reached out to DOR either yesterday or today. So we're, we're keeping the pressure on him, asking for updates. Don't have one yet.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to short term rental discussion. And this is an area where we, the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, are just getting involved, not involved, but just taking notice that we're aware of the situation and we're putting our support behind the subcommittee that's been working on this for probably the past five or six weeks. And Tony, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about it, but these guys are doing, I've sat in on four or five of the meetings. They're doing an outstanding job, and the membership on that is, is based upon some of the departments or the chair chairmanships of their committees and several citizens. They're now at a stage where they, they just brought it in front of the public, not a public hearing, but a meeting with the public in attendance. And it's now probably going to, to continue on in that format as an open meeting at Town Hall. So Tony, I'll let you pick up from there.
Right, so then, you know, they, any, we could meet in person, too. You know, we have, you have the choice to meet in person or meetings, meet by Zoom virtually or meet in like a hybrid fashion, and the committee, I think, was having a difficult time of, you know, they really wanted to be looking at the same document in the same room, and so I think they, you know, a couple of members of the committee prefer that in-person format. They may do more of a hybrid option, but that, you know, with them in person and others being able to tune in remotely or in person. So they're still considering that option. But they've been meeting, you know, their meetings have been public all along. It was just by Zoom. That committee was when, in, two years ago, a town meeting when the town, when, when the Board of Selectmen and I were talking about, you know, formulating the warrant for that town meeting, and we wanted to add the local hotels tax option. It was a conversation about, you know, meeting rules and regulation or bylaws about short term rentals. And so we included a second article that created this committee. And their mission is to do just that, to develop draft bylaws and present them at a future town meeting. And it's in accordance with chapter, Dan, jump in, chapter.
Sixty-four G, section fourteen.
Chapter sixty-four G, section fourteen of the Mass General Laws of the Acts of twenty eighteen. Or actually, no, that, the Acts of twenty eighteen amended chapter sixty-four G, section fourteen.
Significant, yeah, overhauled it, actually.
Yeah. So their mission is to present draft bylaws to a future town meeting where, you know, any registered voter has the ability to come to town meeting and vote in favor or against. But in the meantime, the meetings are public, open to the public, and they have an email address. It's S T R C at nahat.org, which stands for Short Term Rental Committee. So you can either attend a meeting, you can email the committee if you have any input as to what you'd like to see included in the in the draft bylaw. And again, their email is S T R C at nahat.org.
I don't know, I don't know, Tony, if I picked up on that, but are they going to continue the meetings? Open meetings at the Town Hall?
I think, yes, I think that they prefer to be meeting in person. But that, like I said, they, they weren't, they didn't really understand the hybrid option yet. So that, they might move their meetings downstairs to the conference room where people are welcome to attend in person or call in through Zoom. As long as it's posted that way as a hybrid meeting. So I think, I think that the members of the committee prefer to be in person. I don't think they have a preference on whether participation from the public is in person or via Zoom. So hybrid might be the way for them to go. But yeah, I think they're going to try to, try to meet in person, and they meet every other Tuesday.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if would be wise for us to, because we have a number of hot topics on our ongoing business here, to ask if the public has any comments as we go through them, rather than waiting to the end. So just a suggestion that if anybody has any questions about the, the short term rental discussion, maybe we could open it up now, and then we could go to the next and then.
I noticed, I noticed Karen had raised her hand right as we switched to short term rentals as well.
While we go, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we go back and, and do the nine little Nahat road of people. If anybody has any comments, we can address it now, and then as we go through each of these items, we, we open it up at the end to public comment.
Good idea. Do we have any comments out there?
All right, so let's go back, let's, let's go back to nine little Nahat Road. If you have a comment or question related to nine little Nahat Road, please unmute, announce your name and address and your comment or question.
Hi, this is Karen Ricknante, fourteen Howe Road, Nahat, Mass. Thank you very much, Mark and Tony, for taking my question. So I feel like I'm a hostage in my house. I know you guys are doing the very best you can, and I understand it's complicated, and I, Dan, I so appreciate what you said, that, you know, of course, a buyer can buy, can buy it and change their mind and do anything once they own the property as long as they get approval to do whatever they want. So I understand that. It would be very helpful, though, very, very helpful, you know, as Tony opened up with. It's been eleven weeks since we've had an update, and a lot of us are really just not happy, you know, we're, we're like, our lives are a lot, just so you guys know, I know you're doing the best. I really appreciate it, but our lives are being held up because we don't know, we, we don't know what's going to happen, and we don't know what's going on. So we very much appreciate, I appreciate tonight you coming forth and saying what you've said. And it would be very helpful, even though we know that it could change if we had some idea of what the current prospective buyer is intending to do with the property. And maybe legally, that's not possible for us to know, but if, if, if we could know that, first of all, that would be very, very helpful. On second, so again, you guys don't live here, so you don't know what it's like to be living with grass that is almost as high. Sorry, I didn't turn my video on. I meant to, living with grass almost as high as the fence. In the sixty-eight, sixty-seven years we've lived here, it has never been like this. We've never had these kind of conditions. And as I mentioned many months ago, I think the last meeting, it is not only a health hazard, it is a huge health hazard. And with the amount of lime that is in town, it's a huge lime health hazard for people, both for animals and for, and for humans. And anyone that questions whether or not this is a health hazard, they should come and speak directly to me, and I can tell you what it's like to be in bed for five years from Lyme disease and not being able to work and having it for ten years. I'm now lime free, and, and if I get Lyme again, guys, I don't even know where to begin. So it's a huge health hazard. The other health hazard is that the coyotes, they hide in the grass, and it just has been fortunate that I have been on the porch a couple of times and have seen the coyotes in order to alert our neighbor, our neighbors who have dogs and elderly, elderly people who are walking on canes or who have just had surgery and are, are barely able to walk, that they're, you know, there's a coyote hiding in the grass. So it's not just the lime, it's not just, there's animals in there. The third thing is it is a fire hazard. And, you know, God forbid there's a fire. I mean, I wouldn't even know where to go, guys, with, with, if, if anything should happen as a result of this grass. But I'm begging you, I don't know what I have to do, I don't know who I have to talk to, but I'm begging you that within days somehow or other, however, we figure out how to cut this grass. And I understand this is complicated, this may go on for more months, but we, we can't live like this, guys. And it's not fair to us.
Karen, have you, have you reached out to the owner?
I have reached out to Nick, yes, and Nick, Nick has said to me that he can't do anything unless something, a whole harmless waiver has to be signed.
That's not true. It's his, it's still his property. It's still his estate's property. That's not true.
Well, it's not what he's saying to me, and he's telling me that if he does, he's been advised that if he does anything on the property without getting these waivers signed, that he could be sued. And so, because I even said to him, could, could you just give me permission? I'm willing to cut the grass if somebody would give me permission, just on my side. And, and, you know, it seems like, no matter how I ask the question, I had, so it, it's like, you know, if Dave was here, if it hadn't been condemned, right? If Dave was here, Dave would have cut the grass by now. It's, it's just, it just, we've never had this problem. So I beg you. it just, we've never had this problem. So, I beg you, honestly, I beg you.
Have you reached out to Dave and asked him to come?
Well, Dave, yes, I have, and Dave can't because he does not want to get in trouble, because he's been told he can't come on the property. So, he doesn't live here anymore, you know, and, and it's been condemned. And supposedly, because it has been condemned, there are, who, whoever's making up these laws, and, and, and I was actually told to call, call you Dan next, which was gonna be my next call, um, tomorrow, is that I mean, I just can't, I just don't understand why somebody can't come by in the middle of all of this complexity and just please come and cut the grass. I, I think it's-
Karen, I don't, I don't know, Karen, I don't know if we have the, you know, like, legal authority to force them to cut the grass, but I think we could certainly, you know, reach out to um Nick or his uh attorney and ask that they cut the grass.
Or allow them, allow them to cut the grass, or allow somebody to cut the grass.
I did, I don't think it's for us to allow, is what I'm saying, but I think that we can make the ask on your behalf.
Well, it needs to happen, and it needs, it really needs to happen, because I have to tell you, you know, th- there's a lot of frailty. You know, I mean, I don't wanna name names, you know, but, you know, they're i- i- it's amazing somebody hasn't gotten hurt, let's just put it that way. And I also have a generator. You guys are aware, probably, I have a generator, it runs once a month, once a week, does its maintenance, and the grass is high right on the other side of the fence, and I'm like, you know, it, it it's all, it's all to code, it's all that, but it's like, there shouldn't be that grass on the other side. And it concerns me, you know, um, so it's, you know, it's, it's, it's like, in the midst of all of this complexity that's being handled, this little simple thing of cutting the grass should somehow or other should, should be solved. That's all I'm saying.
I understand, and we hear you.
Thank you.
And I think we can pass along the message, and maybe that puts a little extra pressure on them. You know, the town doesn't have any control over the property, we're not prohibiting anybody from doing uh what you're asking. Um, as according to Nick, I mean, according to Dan, what Nick is saying doesn't seem to be true, so you know, maybe uh the extra touch from the town, uh, will put some pressure on them to get it done.
Or if there is a way, Tony, because it, you know, I really don't care how it gets done. As I said, I would actually cut it. Have, I wouldn't cut it personally, but, but, you know, find somebody that could, could cut it, but if there, if there's even a way that through, since you're dealing with all these attorneys, you know, if there is a way through Nick, that Nick's attorney could just even l- give permission to the DPW to come over and cut it, or, or someone else in the town, you know, that is, that's authorized. Like, you know, one of the contractors here that does landscaping, some, some type.
I know, I know, this is, I know it's, um, this is like an odd situation because of the deferred taxes, because of the condemnation, because of the town at one point being potentially interested in pursuing the property. But this is no different from any other neighbor that you have. The town does not have any control over the property, right? So it's no different than any other private property in town, that the town can't just go and, you know, even with permission, use town resources to cut private property grass. So, we, we will, I complete, we, we obviously hear you. We understand the, the frustration that it's bringing uh to you, and we will pass along the message and try to put some pressure on them to take care of it. It's their responsibility. Um, and if there's anything else further that gives us some type of legal authority to apply pressure or do something differently, I'm sure Dan will let me know and, and we'll see, and we'll go down that road, but uh, Dan, am I, am I, am I wrong on what I'm saying, or am I-
No, no, I, I think you're actually right. Um, you, you're absolutely right. I don't know where Nick gets the idea that he needs a release to go on his own property. He's certainly been on there after the condemnation on his own many times.
I should also, I also wanted to mention, I keep forgetting this, the lights on the third floor have been on for two weeks. And that also is a health ha- uh, it's a fire hazard, because God only knows what, you know, what, what the electrical's like, but somehow or others, those lights should be turned off too.
Hey, hey, Dan?
Yes.
I, I would, I would expect that this, these approvals would have to be in writing.
For what approvals?
To, to go on the property and cut the grass?
I, I don't know what Nick's talking about. He, he doesn't need any approval. I, I don't understand where he's coming from. I think he's just making an excuse. Uh, he doesn't need an approval to go in the building. He doesn't need any approval to cut the grass. And like Tony said, we have no control over the property. The extent of our control is exhausted in that we had the ability to condemn it because it was a death threat. So, we've done that. So we've done our due diligence. That does not absolve the homeowner from his responsibility of maintaining the property to the benefit of his neighbors.
But Dan, is, is there, is there some way in which that their lawyer could, could be interpreting that because it's condemned, he can't go, they can't go on?
The attorney is Darcy McDonald, I think she's out of Danvers. I, I don't know what she's telling her client. She didn't have to tell me that, but I, as Tony mentioned, I can reach out to Darcy and express your concerns and see what she has to say.
I would, I would so appreciate it, and um, however it happens, or, or again, if, if somebody would even just say, yeah, Karen, you can, you know, you can hire somebody to cut, cut, cut it. I would gladly, I would gladly pay for it. At this point, I just-
I'll pass that along to Darcy.
Thank you. That's, that's what I really had to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
I see another hand raised. Uh, Susan, not sure if it's related to nine little Nahat Road, or if it's related to short-term rentals.
Yes, hi, this is Susan Casibio at sixty-five Maullis Road. Thank you for taking my comments. I just um wanted to quickly mention that um we uh have, our next door neighbor has a short-term rental, uh, non-owner occupied short-term rental. So I'm pretty um interested in the topic. I'm currently in bed, uh, which is why my camera's not on, because I'm recovering from COVID. So um I would really like to see the meetings continue in the hybrid mode, and I just wanted to throw that out there. I think that would be very helpful, because I think there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of COVID going around right now. And I think there's a lot of people that would be interested in attending that may not attend if it's in person because of that.
I wrote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It, it, Tony, not to break the, the train of thought here, but um, we didn't cover COVID at the beginning. Is, is there any statistics on that, th- this meeting?
Uh, no, I, I can, uh, I probably have some I can pull up, but I usually, what I'll do is I'll present those during the town administrator report.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um, I see Mark with his hand up.
Hi, it's actually not Mark, it's his wife, Terry Clark. I don't know how to change his name on that. Um, but I have a question about the short-term rentals. Uh, the first question is, is, are they legal or illegal in the hut?
Uh, Dan, do you wanna?
Yeah, that's um, it's a good question, and it's not, the answer's not clear. Um, we're still looking into that, and it's not clear because the short-term rentals are relatively new animal. And when our bylaws were drafted with anything even resembling something like a short-term rental, that, that's not what was it they had in mind. So we're still looking into that. I can tell you that there's a lot of discretion that's left to the ZBA to interpret our bylaws, uh, and that's with the general, the um Supreme Judicial, Supreme Judicial, pardon me, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has held. So it's not, it's not crystal clear yet. So we're still looking into it, uh, but at the end of the day, I think it comes down to a ZBA interpretation of our bylaws.
Okay, so because we don't know whether it's legal or not, are we erring on the side of they are legal? Because we have so many of them in town? I know at the um, the last meeting we had at town hall about the short-term rental committee, uh, Tony, you said that um the bylaws were silent on it. So, having said that, it seems to me like the town is taking a position that because they're silent, we are gonna let them have them. Is that what you guys are, have decided?
The, I guess, not quite. Um, more so, the town's position is that we are we are, you know, putting a committee in place to develop rules and regulations that would be presented as a bylaw for the town to vote on at a future date. So-
I understand that, but right now, right now, they're, they're, you don't know if they're legal or not. So I think the question that should be proposed to the town is, do you want them or not? Not, not like through a guidelines for it. It should be, do you want short-term rentals in town, or do you not want short-term rentals in town?
If I could interrupt for just a second, I, I think at, at the beginning of this conversation, I suggested that we as a select board and as citizens, need to let this follow through with the subcommittee. And they may be able to interpret and answer a lot of the questions that you and other citizens are going to ask, but I think we need to give them that opportunity.
I understand that, but right now, I live on a street that has fifty percent of the houses on my street are Airbnbs, and they're not owner occupied, that people don't even live in town. So, and the third house on my street, there's only four, the third house on my street is also starting to um become an Airbnb. So having said that, I would like to know right now, or as soon as possible, whether they're legal or not, because I don't wanna wait until the next town meeting, which is next year. I, I don't think you're gonna have a special town meeting on this. I may be wrong. But, so I have to wait a year, living with transient people coming and going on my street, besides having coyotes too here. I mean, like, I live in a residential zone, it's an R two, bordering on conservation land. So having said that, why are they allowed to do it if you don't even know whether they're legal or not? Why don't we just shut them down and then look at the situation instead of opening them up and then looking at the situation?
Well, we're still looking into the state law and our local law, local zoning laws and bylaws to determine whether we would have solid ground to, in your request, uh, say that they aren't allowed. So we don't know if we have solid ground to enforce it in that manner at this time.
Lindfield did, didn't they?
We're, first of all, uh, we're not Lindfield. Our bylaws are very different from theirs. Um, and as I said, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I understand that this is a frustrating uh topic for you. And I, there, you're not alone. Um, so I don't wanna get into like an argument about other towns and, and there's a lot of confusion about what happened in Lindfield. What I can say is that, you know, the state law clearly provides municipalities the authority to regulate Airbnbs. And that's what the committee's mission is to do. In the meantime, we are looking at our local zoning to understand where they fit or do not fit, but we're not going to um you know, make an enforcement decision until we're feel solid about what that decision is.
I can clarify something.
Aren't you enforcing the, them to be able to do it right now? I don't understand why you can't just put a, a moratorium and have no more, even if you keep the ones that are in place right now, don't have anymore. Some people have eight or nine um STRs already right now. I mean, it's a commercial, it's a commercial business. It, it's definitely a commercial business.
We, we, our bylaws, our zoning laws and our general bylaws are dictated by you, the people at town meeting. So we have to follow those, and, you know, it's possible that our local zoning uh and bylaws can be interpreted that they are allowed. So, we're not going to make a decision. I mean, the very short answer is, we're not gonna make a decision on enforcement until we feel we have a solid ground to stand on. Even though there are many people who are against, and there are people who are for, and we're hearing from both. I can tell you that, I think, I think myself and the Board of Selectmen uh, agree that an unregulated um form of, of this uh shouldn't continue, and that there's, you know, that if, if this is allowed by state law, and if it is permitted by local zoning, that, you know, certain regulations um need to be put in place to make sure that it doesn't uh get out of hand, so to speak.
So is this gonna be voted on at the next town meeting, or are we gonna have a special town meeting on this?
It could be either or. Um, you know, it kinda depends on how quickly the committee is able to develop their regs.
But the, the committee is developing regs to decide whether or not, what, how to um oversee them. But have you guys decided whether or not you're gonna have a vote on whether or not we want them or don't want them?
I can, I can chime into that, Tony. Yeah, please do. Uh, no, we, Tony used a particular word that's very, very important, and that's regulate. We, the Home Rule Amendment passed in nineteen sixty-six to our state constitution gave cities and towns much power to rule themselves, but not to the extent it contradicts a statute. And although our bylaws are different from Lindfield's and everyone else on that, most other ones, we still fall under the same general laws. Section fourteen of chapter sixty-four G gives us power to regulate. It does not give us power to prohibit. So, uh, we don't have the power to ban STRs altogether, but we can regulate them. And you brought up Lindfield, and Lindfield did not ban short-term rent- uh rentals, they just made them very hard to get. In fact, I found no municipality in the Commonwealth that has banned altogether STRs.
So we could, in fact, make them too hard to get?
Uh, we just put regulate, regulations on them, sure, yeah. Hard to get, I mean, that's my sort of term phrase, but
But so they're not, they're not considered commercial?
No, they're not considered a hotel, a motel, anything like that. It's, it's, they're, they're apples and oranges.
If, if, if I could take a second and try to answer your question from the beginning, it, it would simply be, and this is my personal opinion, is that if it's not permitted in the zoning table of use, it's not allowed. If it's not allowed, it needs to be enforced. To being, yeah, to being enforced requires a formal complaint. So, the, the, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong.
Yeah, the SJC actually did decide on that, and the language you're referring to, I think, is section four point zero three, something along those lines, maybe four one three, about a use that's not explicitly allowed is then prohibited. Well, the Supreme Judicial Court, looking at short-term rental, said that doesn't apply to short-term rentals because uh it's still close enough to, when I call a long-term rental, to be sort of within, uh, within the distance of allowable. So, this, the SJC did say that that is not an appropriate reason to prohibit STRs. Because after all, um, where is the difference between a short-term rental and a long-term rental? There's still rentals, right? They're no more commercial than long-term versus short-term. So, there is that sort of proximity of what is allowable. Very clearly.
Thank you. I, I'm just, I'm just going by what I've heard over the last five or six weeks. That generally is what comes up. If it's not permitted, it's not allowed.
Let me address that, uh, chain. Nowhere in our bylaws does it say you can rent your property. Nowhere. Does it say you can rent an apartment? It doesn't say that, but that still is a basic use of property, and if we try to prohibit all rentals, And if we try to prohibit all rentals, that, that would not pass muster with the AG's office because then you're really trying to define civil relationships between people in terms of, uh, uh, contracts and whatnot. Um, so, the short term rental is not a large leap, at least in some degree, on a long term rent. So that's why they're still within the same proximity, that's why the SJC said, that's not a reason to prohibit, or not prohibit, to, um, find that STRs are illegal uses currently.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, it's a good ques, it's a very good question, because this is a very gray area, so it's a lot of great questions out there. Um, so we're doing our best to come through, and as Tony mentioned, the, the, the cachet of general laws that applies to this is very, very young, there's not many cases de- determining the contours of this, of this chapter, um, so we're all sort of in a learning process. Um, and we'll get through it, no doubt, so the, at, the, the Short Term Rental Advisory Committee would be very interested in hearing everyone's input, including yours, Mr.
I have one last question, does anybody know, um, whether the police and the fire can handle any, probably short term?
Would that not be based upon how many there are?
And that's my next question, does anybody know how many there, there really are? Does the town hall know how many there are?
They have to A, a lot of these questions should be addressed to the Short Term Rental Committee, it was brought up and they said that there's, I think they said that there's nineteen registered with the state. And that a registration with the state is required to be featured on these online platforms.
So does anybody, has anybody spoken to the, the chiefs and found out, find out whether or not um, our police can handle it, or our, our fire department can handle these situations? Where we are unique to other cities and towns, we have a small police force, and we have a small fire department. I, I'm just curious, you must, is there like an algorithm to figure out how many, um, policemen you need on the road for so many citizens in town? Because with the Airbnb's, I noticed that like they can register six people, eight people. We've had, on my street, I've had nine people in one house and an RV and tents. So, having said that, the, there's more people gonna be floating around town using our beaches that don't have lifeguards on it. And the police department, are they, are they equipped to handle this influx of people?
Yeah, that's a question for Chief Furlong, Mr. Park, I don't think we can possibly answer.
The selectmen could ask, right?
I mean, that, the, the chiefs are being consulted by the committee in, as they go through the process of developing regulations. Uh, the, the, there's, the police department is not staffed based on how many people are sleeping overnight in the community. Um, you know, in the summertime, the amount of people that are in the hot, not staying here increases significantly. So, you know, I don't, to answer your question exactly, I don't think that I don't think that that would have a factor in how we staff our police department. But there are things that the chiefs are being consulted with, you know, related to, you know, contact information, um, and that would be part of that, you know, uh, smoke detectors, being up to code, public safety issues, and all that would be part of a future regulated system and a local licensing requirement, or part of an application. So certainly they are being consulted as part of that process by the subcommittee.
Okay, the, the only reason why I asked, I'm sorry, but the only reason why I asked about the extra people is because they're in vacation mode when they're here. They're not in like regular people mode, where they're going to work or, or whatever, they're on vacation here. I mean, I see it, I live on Motel Street down here, so
If I compare it with Tony is saying, we really need to let the short term committee take and do the job as they've been charged to do. They'll bring up on, through attendance or otherwise, hybrid, however you want to do it. It would seem to me that they would be the ones, at least at this point, to make determinations as to how this should go. Because eventually, you're probably going to have the planning board involved, the zoning board involved, selectmen involved. But right now, I think it's very important we let them do what they've been charged to do.
Okay, and, and they'll be getting back to the town residents sooner? Or in like in a few months, or next town meeting? When would that be?
I don't, they're meeting every other Tuesday, so you know, I would just follow along and, you know, they, they don't have a, you know, we're certainly, um, hopeful that at the latest, it would be featured at the next annual town meeting.
Which is next May?
Which is in May.
Okay, so in the meantime, we have
Could be sooner.
Because I've gone to the planning board meeting, and I went to the, I've gone to the short term rental meetings, but it just seems like some of my questions are not answered, the planning board told me to file a, um, a thing for enforcement of the residential code, but I couldn't find any of the paperwork, so. So I guess I just wait till next May? Is that what, that's really what you're saying, right?
Hopefully, it'll be sooner than that.
Yeah, and I think
I'd like to, um, just add, um, that, you know, I, I agree, you know, we gotta work through the short term rental committee, but, um, I'd encourage you to keep going, I think, uh, to those meetings. I, I think you raised a lot of good questions, and, um,
Oh, I have lots more.
Part of their process, I hope.
I guess you can hear my frustration, because I have to live with it until next May. And, you know, it doesn't seem fair, I bought in a residential area, and I did not buy in a commercial zone, and I know you're saying it's, they're not commercial, but sure appears like it. You know, especially when you see nine people going into a house and, you know, let's party, so, anyway, I guess I'll wait till May.
Okay, and if you, uh, Becky, your hand is raised?
Thanks, Tony, as a, as a lawyer, I just wanted to respond myself to some of the comments of the last speaker. Um, I live next to an Airbnb, I, I also own a short term rental that is not currently being used as a short term rental, I own a property on Little Nahat Road in addition to my residential address at Castle. And the Little Nahat Road is currently being rented to one of the families who had a fire recently. We're very happy to serve in, in that capacity, to help a local family and assist them to, through this time where they're having difficulty. But some of the things that have been raised tonight, I am concerned about. Number one, I am concerned about, um, Mr. Canty and other folks making representations about the law that are not accurate. So, I, I don't think it's appropriate for folks to be misstating the law or misrepresenting the law. And, so I really urge caution, um, I thought Mr. Scripps uh, comments tonight were perfectly appropriate. Um, but I, I am worried that there are some, some overreaching comments that are happening on Facebook and, um, in other places, um. The, the moral of the story is that short term rental, rentals are not a commercial use, they're residential use. Um, the, the power to regulate how somebody uses their private property is a very difficult area to wade into. Um, and so with regard to the last speaker's comments uh, and the idea that she could prohibit somebody from, from using uh, a property that, that is properly owned and being operated in a residential use in a residential community is concerning. Um, and I think it bears noting that in the event that there's an attempt to regulate or, or prohibit, not the word regulate, but prohibit, to prohibit perfectly appropriate uses that have been recognized by the state will result in legal action. And that's, that's a step that the, the town does not want to, to step forward into, I'm sure. Um, there are plenty of people in town who have had positive experiences. Um, and I am concerned that, um, that, that the comments by the, the Soul family on Fur Bush um, that repeatedly go to the meetings and raise concerns and talk about, um, pedophiles, which I think was used
I'm sorry to cut you off, could you, for the record, state your full name and address?
Sure, Rebecca Dalby, residential address is one twenty-four Castle, and the STR is twenty-one Little Nahat Road. Um, the house that we purchased as a STR was in great disrepair, everything needed to be updated and replaced. Um, and we just started renting, um, to a local family on Wharf, uh, who had a fire. Um, that family had nowhere else to go, and, and so approached the short term rental, uh, operators. Um, a- and eventually their name was passed on to me because I had the space. Um, short term rentals have beneficial results for the town, and, and that's just the point that I wanted to make. I don't mean to drag this out, uh, but I do think there's another side to the story.
Thank you, Becky, again, I, you know, as, as the chairman had mentioned earlier, you know, the, the comments that you just had, and the comments that the resident had on, from Fur Bush Road, um, and prior to that, you know, are all comments that really should be presented to the subcommittee. And tonight's, I think that the Board of Selectmen's um, intent tonight was to help explain, uh, you know, the, the process that the Short Term Rental Committee is going through, and why we, you know, pursue that through a town meeting vote. Um, so appreciate the comments from all, uh, but really, those, those are things that should be submitted to the, to the Short Term Rental Committee. Um, again, strc@nahat.org.
Thanks so much, Tony, I appreciate it, and appreciate all, everybody's hard work on the committee and, and here.
Thank you.
I had a general question, Brendan Bronnik Olmstead, two Summer Street. Um, until regulations or this committee's finish, if the town were to take action, would it open itself to excessive legal fees?
Potentially. I would answer that, I mean, that's a pretty general question, Brendan, I, I think, obviously, it depends on the action that we take and the ground that we sit on, so that's why, you know, I was saying earlier is, um, you know, we we fully recognize the, the passion on both sides of this issue. But the town, you know, is always, in any situation, going to be careful to make sure that we're standing on strong, sound legal ground before we, uh, enforce something in that capacity.
Thank you.
Any more questions on, on either of those subjects? Nine Little Nahat Road, or short term rentals?
Nothing, nothing in the chat, nobody else is, uh, unmuted, so I think we can move to the next one.
All right, let's move on to the Tudor Beach Ramp discussion. I'll leave that with you.
Okay, the Tudor Beach Ramp discussion, this is the ramp, um, at, on Willow Road at the end of Tudor Beach. Uh, we've had, have this on the agenda tonight, um, there's been, you know, a lot of, uh, public discussion and questions to the town as to, uh, what is um, happening with the ramp, and what's the ownership right related to the ramp? Um, because after this, this past winter, uh, there were, uh, granite blocks placed on the ramp and rope and sign saying that the relic was closed, and that was done by the butter to the ramp. So there was a lot of question from residents as to, you know, why is that happening? How can, how can that, uh, resident do that, you know, doesn't the town own the ramp? And, we've been working on this, uh, for quite some time now, uh, looking, doing our research. And again, as I've just mentioned under the last topic, you know, making sure that, uh, we are on sound legal ground in any action that we take. So we wanted to bring that up tonight, so that the residents of the, of Nahat and of the, you know, surrounding area um, are aware of the town's position on this issue. So Dan, with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to you.
Okay, um, let's put ownership aside, it doesn't really matter who owns the ramp. Um, because our research is, has reached back to the two previous owners of one, uh, all these addresses run together, to one sixty-three Willow. Um, dating back to the mid seventies. And, her name was Ms. Gim, Gimpo, and she now lives in Virginia. So I spoke to her, and she made it very clear that, again, ownership not being an issue, she never touched on it. And she never stopped anyone from using it, whether it be the town, or, you know, Joe resident, or Jane resident. I spoke to the owner after that, um, Ms. Morris, who lives now up in, um, Newburyport. She said the same thing, she never, never even considered owning it, never even stopped anyone from using it. Um, and that, those two ownerships lasted almost twenty years, maybe even a little bit more. So, our position, oh, I should also say, we've also gone back to, uh, the three previous DPW directors and asked them if they had received any sort of permission from that particular landlord on that property. And each one to the, to the man said, no, we never got any sort of special permission, we never thought we needed it, we always thought the town had control over the ramp. So, that being said, we, and, and there's some other legal aspects of it, but just to make it simple, we believe that not only does a town have what they call a prescriptive easement over that ramp, so does the, the citizens. So, the current owner, and we made this very clear in a letter to him just this, this past week, um, has no ability to block what they call block the easement, which is to say, put holds up there, put a, put a gate up there, put a, put a rope up there. So, we, we said to him, this is our position, and if you don't believe it, feel free to challenge us. But if you do put some barriers up there, we're gonna take them down, and if you think we're wrong, we'll challenge us in land court, and we'll see how it goes. Uh, that being said, I, I do believe the primary concern of that homeowner is simply the safety of the public, and we can share that concern. We were all concerned about that, because it does get slippery, um, with the stuff from the ocean, and it can cause a, a bit of a hazard. So we are going to take measures in terms of the town, putting some signage, um, ensuring that it's maintained and things of that nature. So, um, it's our position that not only does a town have an easement over that ramp, so does the public, and the homeowner has no right to block.
And, and, and even further, I'll say that, you know, the, the practice of blocking the ramp and/or any beach access point in the winter months is something that the town Public Works Department um, does and considers, depending on the vulnerability of that area to flooding. So it's possible that, you know, we may, um, continue that practice or do it differently in the future, um, but I think the point that, you know, you're making, Dan, is that would be a town that, that it would, it's not a decision of the, of the abutting property, uh, to do so.
Right, that's true, uh, we should note that we did give that homeowner the ability to come before you today. He, he opted not to for now, but he did, uh, say that he might want to come next month.
Okay, in the discussion, further discussion. Hearing them, we'll move on to ongoing business D, coyote discussion.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, yes, coyotes and, uh, coyotes have been a, uh, topic that has been, um, uh, discussed on social media, through email, through phone calls, uh, it's been a, a hot topic, so to speak. Uh, we've Uh we've, we have uh been working with mass wildlife. Um we work with mass wildlife on any coyote issue. Uh to be honest, but especially recently in the last month. Uh we've had two incidents of domestic pets being. Hit by a coyote while on leash. Um which is that is very new. Uh we've never had a report of an on leash incident. We certainly have had other reports of um interactions. Or off leash uh interactions with domestic animals. But on leash brings it to another uh level. So. Uh we've we've certainly ramped that conversation up with mass wildlife. Our message. To the residents, which is the message that we are receiving from the state. Is that ninety nine percent of this solution is with the individual. And the behavior of the individual uh resident. So making sure that coyotes don't view humans as a source of food. Whether that be because you have um trash that isn't uh covered, bird feeders. Um if you're leaving, you know, food for your for your pets out on a front or back porch. Any type of food source in and around your house will attract a wild animal. Um and so that's one huge piece to uh deterring coyotes. Another is making sure that you do have your dogs um or animals on leash when. Outside of the home. Um certainly dusk and dawn are uh even more. Uh I guess risky times, I think um the based on what mass wildlife says is that coyotes tend to. Um be looking for food in the morning and at dusk and dawn. So. Certainly at those times, especially and when you're walking near um undeveloped. Uh like wildlife sanctuaries or um forestry areas or. Along the golf, you know, in the heart, it's really like the golf course, the bird sanctuary, lowlands area. There are many others as well. But especially in those areas, you want to make sure that you are um that you have your animal on a leash, uh your pet. And if you, they also express how you should interact with a coyote if it were to. Um interact with you and you should be hazing the animal. So loud sounds. Um making yourself as big as possible, uh whether that if you have a coat on or. Or something of that nature, making sure you you're um, you know, being aggressive towards a coyote. So that they learn that interactions with humans are not safe. Um and this is whether. No matter um any other solution that the town could potentially consider related to the population of coyotes. The behavior of individual residents and especially those of pet owners is. Ninety nine percent of the solution and ninety nine percent of what mass wildlife is saying has to be occurring. So. A lot of that information we're putting on our website. Uh we've offered um whistles, free whistles to residents in the past. We're looking to invest in tho- in in those or louder sound. Pocket sized sound tools to help with hazing. Uh a uh a pocket sized air horn, for instance, um is a good tool. And all those things are available online to the individual resident. So you can go on and you can. Purchase those things yourself. Um and use those, but we are us uh as the town. We are, you know, looking to purchase some more of those and make them available to residents as well. So that's ninety nine percent of it. What's the other one percent? Um we've. We've spoke with, I have an a F A Q that actually Josh found. Um Selectman Antrim found from another community that we're reviewing and um pulling and adopting that to add it to our website. We have a extensive memo from uh mass wildlife about. Um you know, the imp- the legal impediments and the different ways to address coyotes. And how they can be positive or negative. I'm going to be putting that on our website as well. Um so I think, you know, we've pushed education. For a while now, and I know this dates back, a- as I mentioned in um the article in the item the other day. I know this dates back to twenty ten and maybe earlier. So we have never, you know, luckily, knock on wood, we've never had. Um until just recently, any sort of um issue with an on leash. Domestic animal and certainly no issue with a human being. So um. When you're speaking with mass wildlife, every time we have a report of an attack. On a pet. You know, they they ask us what what are the details of those of that encounter? Um they don't view. Uh an off leash pet being attacked by a coyote as a public safety issue. They view that as normal coyote behavior. And so. Until recently, uh with these last two incidents, uh the. You know, we've somewhat entered into a different threshold of a situation where the resident themselves have a couple extra. Options to consider. Uh but even those options of hunting, trapping and relocation are very, very limited. Uh based on legal uh for legal reasons and beyond or. Um success, rate of success. So. Ways to get, you know, that one percent, ways to get rid of the ways to lower a population or ways to get rid of coyotes. Um first is hunting. Hunting is uh heavily regulated by the state. There is a hunting season for coyotes. However, you cannot discharge a firearm within five hundred feet of a structure of a home. Or a hundred and fifty feet of a roadway. Uh so under state law, Nahat, there really isn't any place that. Is under state law uh legally able to discharge a firearm. Further, the town has a local bylaw that doesn't allow discharging of weapons anywhere anyways. So for that, probably. You know, ten square feet in the middle of the golf course or on top of East Point. Um that might be outside of the five hundred foot uh state law, you still can't. Um. Discharge a firearm because of our local bylaw. So hunting is not an option. Uh trapping coyotes. The traps that were in the past effective to trapping coyotes. Uh were foothold traps, snares and cable restraints, all of which were made illegal by a ballot referendum vote. In nineteen ninety six. So they are no longer legal to be used in the in the state. And the trapping season, which again happens for the month of November, only once a year. Um. The only thing allowed really is large box traps, which are about the size of a kitchen table. Um difficult to get and you have to bait them. So the success rate, even during the legal hunt uh trapping season, is very low. And there's, as mass wildlife states, there is a a lot of. Um negative im- effects of obviously baiting a trap and leaving it out there. So. Uh trapping, you know, while probably is the best option. May not be super successful. Further, if you trap a coyote, you cannot relocate that coyote. Uh the state does not allow you to make to take a problem animal and relocate it to another community. So that coyote would be killed in that scenario. Um but according to mass wildlife, because coyotes. Um are very territorial, made for life, um they will. Populate an area and regulate their own population according to the food supply. So if you were able to get a trap. Put it in a location where it's a good place to bait and you were to catch a coyote and kill it. You're making room for another coyote to fill that void. And unlikely to capture all the coyotes in the heart. So trapping, while it may be an option, um may not be a successful option. And could result in actually negative impacts. There's a a lot more information here that I already discussed about individual behavior that I'm going to add to our website as well. Um and I think I'm gonna. I think I'm gonna stop there. I see a lot of comments in the chat and a few hands being raised. So. Um unless, you know, before I turn that over, does the board of selectmen have any questions or comments?
Um yeah, I I'd just like to say, um you know, this this has been a really frustrating um problem. Um for for the board of selectmen and um town administrator, um you know. Our 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 hands are tied legally um by by the state laws that Tony just outlawed. We can't, we certainly can't condone. Breaking any laws and in the limited legal options have practical. Limitations, again, as Tony kind of outlined. I would like to get that information, the F A Qs up on our website as soon as possible, Tony, as well as. I thought the letter from um I think it was Dave Waddle, the the wildlife expert uh was very thorough. Very informative and really kind of brings to light. Uh why this problem is so difficult. It's, you know, it's. It's frustrating for me personally, you know, to have citizens saying, you know. Please solve this problem and um not being able to. Satisfy that request. So um you know, particularly for uh particularly disheartening, you know, when someone. Uh citizen has lost a pet or something like that. Uh. I don't know, for me personally, it's it's tough to not be able to provide a solution to to a problem. So um. It's a tough one. It really is. Um and it's not just Nahat. It's all over the state. Um we talked about the trapping. Um. Back a year ago, almost almost a year ago, I talked to the um the um most local um. P A C, forget what that stands for, but the 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 folks that are authorized by the state, there's only a limited number. Um animal control officers that are permitted, permitted animal control officer, I think is what it stands for. And um. He was not very encouraging about the trapping prospects. Coyotes are smart, as you pointed out, Tony, you have to bait the trap. So what that means is you have to bait the trap. Repeatedly without setting the trap. So the coyotes have to get used to going in there, getting free food. Over a long period of time till you then set the trap and actually catch one, but um. It's not easy uh from what this from what this officer told me. And um again, that letter from the wildlife expert said, you know, it it gets regulated by the food supply. The population gets regulated. Laid by the foods food supply. So it, you know, like you said. We got to harass them at every turn like without exception so that when they see a human with a pet on the leash, they don't. They're too afraid to come close. It's. It's not the answer that the people want to hear, but uh. It's the best answer we have at the moment. We'll continue to look at other other options and possibilities of changing the law, but. It is a tough one. It really is. Um that's all I had.
I just follow up um Josh that, you know, over the past several weeks, talking to town council and Tony and. Officials at the state and our state representatives that it appears to me now that Nahat is doing. Everything it can do within the limits of the law. I mean, if there's something else that. That would help us, I'd. I'd be o- open to it. Um I do have a question, though, about, I know it's illegal to discharge a firearm. But other sort of um. Uh weapons, if you will. Um maybe I I think the chief is on. Uh Dan, you may know also. I mean, I literally. Um what um encountered a couple who were walking a small dog on a leash. The other day and he had a old broken ax handle in his hand. And I jokingly said, is that for the coyotes? He said, yes, it is. Um and I completely understood. Um. You know, I mean, if if a coyotes are talking my dog, I would use a whatever I could to get him off it. Um. Are there any other sort of things? For example, I'm an avid hiker. Um I go hiking quite a bit in bear country. I have bear spray. Can I use bear spray? Um are there um sort of air air guns that shoot pellets, non lethal pellets? Are they allowed? Uh so. Some of these things that, you know, people have asked me, so. Pass them along to you, town council, maybe the police chief.
I I don't know. E- everything you said sounds fine to me based on what I looked into. Um it the the pellet gun thing might be an issue. I'm not quite sure if it's legally considered a firearm. Uh that's a question I have to turn the chief role on for or look into myself.
No, the the pellet gun is not considered a firearm. Uh however, I I think that would upset the the animal more and make it more aggressive.
Bear spray?
Bear bear spray, pepper spray, that's legal. Uh it's it's actually uh a preferred method of of defending yourself from a coyote. Um.
The problem with that is if a dog, you can spray the dog and the coyote. Bring your dog with it.
Yeah, so they they do have different types of pepper spray. Uh for example, I carry a gel form when I walk my dogs. Um and there's no permit anymore. All you need is uh you have to be twenty one and a good moral character to or in order to purchase it. So. The the gel form, especially in the heart, uh is is more likely to get through the wind that is all over the island. So. And it's it's a more, it's a it's a stream. It's not a spray. So if you're aiming it at the coyote, as long as it's not like hurricane. You're gonna you're gonna hit the coyote.
Hey, Tony, uh in in our discussion today on this matter. You talked about ordering some air horns for distribution.
Right. So I'm I'm looking into that. Again, you know, they're available on Amazon. Uh so they're about, you know, the pocket sized ones can range from anywhere from five to fifteen dollars. Uh so, you know, I would I would tell residents, you know, don't wait for the town. Um where, you know, you can you can go ahead and order one tonight. Uh but we are trying to. Uh find a supplier that could satisfy a larger size order than um just. You know, I online, the max size order that I could find was um, you know. Ten or twelve um items per order. So I'm I'm actively searching for a wholesaler. To to seek out like a a a hundred or two hundred of them. Um but but like I said, those are available online. Uh folks can, you know, whistles, air horns. I I think that the. The pellet, the pellet gun uh idea. You know, personally concerns me a little bit, you know, some of these. Um some of those types of guns, you know, A, look very similar to a legitimate firearm. Uh B, you know, some of them can travel pretty far and C, um you know, I want to make sure that. Those who are using them are using them responsibly. Um so I don't want to create another problem, but again. Um hazing the animal as much. But again, um, hazing the animal as much as possible, um, to get them to understand that, you know, humans are not a source of food, um, is gonna help teach them and hopefully learn that there's not enough food supply on the, on, in, within town that they leave on their own. As they did, you know, between the years of like twenty-ten and twenty-nineteen.
Yeah, I would add, Tony, that this is the time of year, you, you didn't mention it, in the spring when they have their pups, their new litter. So they're, they're really out looking for food now because they have more mouths to feed. So this is the time of year from everything I've read that you're gonna see the population increase.
Right. Uh, according to Mass Wildlife, that population will regulate itself. If there's not enough food supply to feed all the mouths in the den, they will leave and find somewhere else to, to be. Coyotes mate for life. Um, they find a partner and they mate for life. So they don't, um, they, they create a home and that's how they, and they're very territorial. Uh, so if there isn't a mate and there isn't food, they're gonna travel until they find one or both of those down. Um, alright, so there's a few hands, um, raised. Um, again, if, uh, if you can state your name and address, um, and then your comment and question, that'd be helpful. So, um, I'll go with Pamela Duncan. It says on the screen. You can, uh, unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Noel and Tom Costin's, Miles Menny Costin and Tom Costin's daughter. I'm here taking care of them. My name is Pam Duncan, fifty-four Mayolus Road, Nahant. Um, it's the witch house. You all know it. Um, we have tons of coyotes in the yard. Um, I talked to the animal control officer on Sunday. We woke up to eight coyotes in the backyard. Um, Tom told me to call the police. He told me to call the animal control officer. I spoke to Scott Greaves. He told me they did not respond to noise. Um, they do not howl due to noise. They do not eat rabbits. Yes, they do. I wailed the horn like he told me to the other day. I think I just disturbed the entire street. I've been in touch with all of my neighbors, um, and they howled when I wailed that thing. And there are at least nine in the yard. They are running through the gazebo. They are under the gazebo. We were sitting out in the yard. They're running all over the place. Um, I'm afraid for my parents because they're elderly. They're on canes and walkers. They're ninety-five and eighty-four. And I mean, my mother wanted me to close the upstairs windows the other night because she was afraid the coyotes were gonna come in. And I said, they don't fly. However, we do keep our downstairs windows open. We don't have central air. And two mornings ago at six AM, they're howling outside my bedroom window. I mean, something needs to happen. There are way, way too many coyotes in, in our yards. I mean, they run back and forth from the bishop, bishops in my yard. I know my neighbor across the street who's on tonight saw them walking down the street with rabbits in their mouths, which I was told they're too fast for them to catch. Mom had one, pup had one, I was told. When the Carey Street incident happened at the Denine's old house, um, they were howling and there were tons of them running all over the place. One woman scooped her dog up and was afraid for her life. Um, it's frightening. I mean, I park my car in a garage and have to walk to the house. Do I have to carry a blowhorn with me to come from my garage to the house? What if I come home after dark? I mean, it's a problem and it's getting worse. Um, my neighbor across the street's dog, who's pretty big, was just knocked down by two of them. He was fine, but this guy was taking his dog for a walk. He just told me today, two coyotes knocked him over. I mean, it's a problem. Coming more aggressive and they're not afraid of people. I mean, the, when the animal control officer said, yeah, you blew the horn, they didn't go away. That means you need to walk towards them. Okay, so he's sicking human beings after the coyotes to scare them away.
The, the animal control officer, that, that's, that's, that's not really.
Absolutely told me that. You can call.
Yeah, that's what Mass Wildlife recommends as a way to show that you are superior to the animal, to scare the animal away. Uh, I wouldn't characterize.
I'm, if I'm not here, I have my parents. Are, are, are they not able to sit out in their side yard because of the coyotes? Oh, I also almost stepped in coyote scat the other day when I walked out the back door to go outside. Okay, my, my dog has to be on a leash. I don't have one, but I have to pick up after coyotes?
Okay, this seems to be a real one with, have you spoken with Mass Wildlife? Or have you called a, a problem animal, animal control officer, a PAC?
I called your animal control officer on Sunday because the police told me to.
So you as a private property owner, um, if you are dealing, if you meet the threshold of a, of a certain amount, um, Mass Wildlife will allow you to hire a PAC, a problem animal control officer, to potentially trap the animals or find a way to, to deal with the problem, um, outside of the typical hunting or trapping season. If you meet that threshold, I think it sounds like you.
How much property do you need?
I don't think, I don't know. I'm not sure.
I actually think they live on my neighbors, but the properties combined, I mean, where they go, where I see them running, it's combined. And I mean, she can confirm that, yeah, they were howling and there were a ton of them. And her son, who's a musician, was worried if I had, um, um, what do you call them? Things in my ears, earplugs in.
Hey, Tony?
My name is, my name is Tom Costin. I happen to live right here. And, uh, the thing that bothers me right now is that, uh, you're talking as if you're defending, uh, this animal that we're talking about. We are looking to the town to take care of this situation. Because if, 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 if a person is to attack or, or for a child's attack, then it's too late. We're trying to tell you now that this is something that the town has to take care of and they should do it immediately.
Uh, Mr. Costin, we, we don't disagree with you. Uh, we've expressed that same sentiment to Mass Wildlife. All I'm doing is relaying the message that we're receiving back from them.
Well, what we have to do then is to make the message a little stronger through our, through our representatives at the State House or elsewhere, but it has to be done. This is something that we as citizens in the, uh, state of, of Commonwealth of Massachusetts desire and want. And they should take care of it.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
This, this does seem to be a rather unique situation with eight or nine or ten of these. Would this be classified obviously as a den? Uh, would, would, would it make it any easier to do some trapping?
I think that they, I think Mass Wildlife needs to be consulted for that. We, we don't, we don't, we don't have the authority to allow for trapping based on a certain threshold, but they do.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We should, maybe we can, it, make some contacts and see what we get. Because this isn't just going to protect that piece of property. It's probably gonna be protect most of that area. And we're hearing complaints from that area.
This is, that is gonna protect the whole town. It's not just this area. It's the whole town. If these, if these animals get the idea that they can go anywhere, they're gonna go anywhere. And so we might as well take advantage, uh, advantage of everything that we have available to us from the state on down.
I'm telling you, while you were talking about, um, the housing incident, a coyote was in the middle of our yard howling. I opened the window. I wish I had been on speaker. It was standing in the middle of my, our rock garden and they, they were howling on both sides of our, our yard. So like the Christie's side and the Bishop's side. Susan Casio probably heard him across the street. I know she's been out on her porch. I mean, they're all over the neighborhood. I mean, everybody's afraid. It's a, it's frightening. I mean, we're afraid to go out. These people with little dogs, Mr. Jerry down the street. I mean, people are in danger. They can be knocked over. They can get concussions, break a leg. I mean, it's, the, the coyote should not have more rights than its taxpaying citizens of the town. It's nuts. And saying that this is what the wildlife protection people say is great, but in theory, it doesn't work for the town payers, the taxpayers or the citizens of Nahant, which is the smallest town in Massachusetts.
We have to fa- uh, we, we, we can't ignore state laws. Uh, and I think, Tom, you're absolutely right. We've reached out. I know that Tony has, I have, I think Gene and probably Josh have, we've reached out to our representatives. We've, we've expressed to them what our concern is uh, about the uniqueness of this town and that we feel that it's being over, overpopulated. And they, and the, um, the, perhaps the cure to this is legislation. Uh, but it's, it's not a, the town can't pass a bylaw, um, allowing us to do something the state is not allowing us to do. So I agree with you. I'll be the first one to walk a petition around. But, you know, those types of things are out of our hands.
So who do we talk to? We've got Tom. He knows everybody. I mean, who, who do you want him to call? What do you want him to do?
They've already been contacted. We've talked, uh, state senator, uh, state representative. That's where you start.
That, that would be to potentially change one of the legal impediments that I mentioned earlier, uh, for the issue that you're dealing with in your, in your, in with the abutting property in, in your backyard. I think, I think, yeah, I think, I think Mass Wildlife, which, like I said, I've been on, I've been, I've had a call with them almost every other day for the last two weeks. So I'll, I'll mention it to them as well. But, uh, I'll, if I can, um, maybe you could email me. Uh, my email is abarletta@nahant.org. And then I'll try to connect you with our contact at Mass Wildlife um, to find out what can be done now for your unique situation. Um, what avenues are available? I think it might be trapping, um, through the effort of a PAC. But Mass Wildlife has to.
Excuse me, e- excuse me, it's not our unique situation. We're one, one, uh, uh, one home on this road and these animals are going through every yard in the area. So don't put it down as a Tom Costin or a, or, 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 uh, uh, any other one person. It's a, a, a problem for the town. So don't try, don't try to put it in one neighborhood. It's over the whole town.
There were twenty, I heard between twenty-five to fifty down at the old Denine's property when the sirens went off for the unfortunate Carey Street incident. You know, a neighbor was walking her dog. She, she was petrified. They were howling and running all over the place. She scooped up her dog and ran home. I mean, she's in her seventies.
I, I understand.
You know, it's not just the house. They're everywhere.
We, uh, Pamela, we, we, we hear it loud and clear. We recognize the issues. We recognize the problems. If there is something that we are not doing that you think we should be doing, please let me know.
I don't know what you should be doing, but I do know that I used to live in Connecticut and people who lived near, um, woods couldn't put their little kids out on a blanket because the coyotes would come out of the woods and grab them. So I'm told they won't touch humans. Well, they did.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm open to pursuing any avenue without legal bounds that we can. So, I mean, I.
Some time at the bench down the street and have a chat or sit in the gazebo and have a coffee. I mean, I'm open to anything. I just think there's something needs to happen. I mean.
And I think that is, as Tom said, that that has to happen at the state level.
Well, it'll take three years. When will that happen?
It's a good question. Probably more than three years, if it ever happens at all.
Frustrating.
And I wanna reiterate that we are on your side in this issue. We understand the concern and the frustration and that we are trying to do everything, as Mark said, within our legal bound to do it.
You know, we used to have a beautiful rock garden. I'm afraid to go garden because that's where they come. And that's in the middle of the yard. And they're out there all the time.
Okay.
I mean, you shouldn't. Go outside or in our house.
Okay.
You know, I blew the horn.
I'm not sure. I, I don't know. Every, every time I have a conversation about coyotes with a resident, if, I'm at a loss for words. I don't, there's nothing I can say that is gonna solve the problem. There's nothing I can say that's gonna solve the problem.
Right.
We aren't already trying. And it's not our fault that we don't have other avenues that would potentially be a solution that would be acceptable to you. And every time I have.
No, but excuse me, excuse me. It, 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 it's better if it comes from the town rather than from an individual. Now, just listen to me now. It's a town problem. It's a town problem. And so before someone, uh, uh, loses their life over it, let the state, other people know exactly what we have here and tell them we need help.
We have.
We have and we continue to do so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. We, we understand that it's not unique, totally unique to your area, but it is on that side of town for some reason or another. And Tony said he's gonna begin to, to continue the efforts he's been making. And I spent an hour with him today talking about this very subject and he's really involved in it. And, uh, I, I, I can't say I can see anything happening as Mark says. This could take time, but for now, we'll try our best to get this going.
I, it's, um, it, it, it's probably not often for someone in my position to be as open and honest as I'm trying to be here. It's extremely frustrating that we don't have an answer. And every time I have a conversation about this issue with a resident, it becomes this, um, it becomes this, you're not doing enough conversation on the town. And we're doing everything within our legal bounds that we can. And, and I understand that that doesn't seem like enough. But it's not because we disagree. It's not because we don't care. It's not because we're not trying. Um, so it's frustrating because, well, we want, we're here to try to help. We're here to try to help. We're, we are putting the pressure on our state delegation. We're explaining to them, you know, the situation that we're hearing from the residents. And I'm relaying the information we get back. Um, we haven't, we haven't proposed to them any type of legislation because we don't know what that legislation would even look like. Certainly, you're never gonna pass legislation that changes how many feet you have to be away from a structure when discharging a firearm. That will never change. You're not gonna change the type of traps that you can use. That was outlawed by a referendum vote by the state in ninety-six. So what is the legislative change that's gonna provide us a, a, a way to solve this problem instead of just waiting for it to solve itself? I don't have that answer. We haven't heard that answer from anyone, but if we had it. I don't have that answer. We haven't heard that answer from anyone, but if we had it, I'm, you know, you're hearing from the selectmen, we would, we would push for it. So it's frustrating for you. It's frustrating for us. And we're not, I'm not defending the animal. I'm just relaying the message that we're hearing from the state. Um, next is uh, Susan. I'm not gonna say your name, the last name right.
Casio.
Sivio.
Yep. Hi, Susan Casio, sixty-five Maullis Road. Um, I um, just wanted to mention the incident in Swamp Scott the other day where the, the man got bit. Um, so they are, they do attack people despite what the state may say. And I'm wondering, I've seen them chase down people down my street. Um, elderly people, walking dogs. Um, I keep a baseball bat by my back door when I take my dogs out in my six-foot stockaded fence backyard. Because I'm afraid, because I can see them across the street. As, as Pam said, there is a huge den of them over there. There's at least nine of them. There's mother, a father. And I've, I've personally seen today was watching the four babies play. Um, as people were watch, walking along marginal way. And I could see people running in horror when they looked over the bushes and saw the four coyotes playing. And they were good sized. They were probably forty-five to fifty-pound pups. Um, I think that I've warned my neighbor that is, lives in back of us who has a small child. They probably walk in a carriage. I mean, I'd be, I, I look at people, I'm, I'm talking to people on my front porch all day long saying, you guys, there's, there's coyotes right here. You need to be careful. You, you know, you need to be careful. I have the air horns. I have the things. My other question is, is the state doing anything to measure the problem? Because we are the smallest town in the state. You know, landmass wise. So are we measuring the population? And how big it's actually getting? Because I can see just from my front porch, which is a very limited view of Nahat, that we've got a huge problem and it's gotten a lot worse. And I just ordered coyote vests for my two smallest dogs that we walk because that are the ones with spikes on them. Because I know that, that I have read that the coyotes know how to go in and kill a small animal in one bite. And um, I think that we need to get our arms around how big the problem is, not just saying that we do have a problem, but is it getting bigger? Is it getting worse? Are we worse than any other town as far, as far as, you know, how many coyotes we have per our landmass? I mean, are we measuring that? Are we trying to get our arms around that?
So I'll try to answer a couple of the questions that you said. And again, please keep in mind that this is based on conversations I've had with Mass Wildlife. The issue, the, the, the incident you mentioned in Swamp Scott. Um, we've reached out to Swamp Scott Police Department and the town of Swamp Scott to find out, you know, what happened there and um, what's the, what's, what's the response to it? Um, they may, they may seek an avenue to try to capture the coyote in that area. Um, they have, uh, it'll be very difficult for them to identify if they capture a coyote at all in that area. If it was the one that bit that human being. Um, but they don't, they do not have, that incident doesn't allow them to go and try to capture multiple coyotes or all of the coyotes. So even then, even in that situation, the response, you know, doesn't get to what I think the hot residents are looking for. Um, so that's one comment on that. The other is, when speaking with Mass Wildlife, it's not based on population. Their um, approach or expertise um, is all predicated on the fact that the, that coyotes regulate the population themselves. That if there isn't a mate, if there isn't a food source, they will leave and find one or seek one. Uh, or two, uh, or, or both. Um, and that they, they're very territorial, so they don't allow other coyotes to create a den in proximity to theirs. So according to Mass Wildlife, based on that idea or that concept, the population isn't really um, a, a tool, like measuring the population isn't really a tool that would trigger any sort of action. Because in theory, they are going to regulate themselves. Again, that, that's what I get from Mass Wildlife. Um, but as far as um, any incident that gets, you know, uh, called into the police department uh, or gets transferred to, you know, eventually makes its way to our animal control officer. Uh, it then goes, uh, gets reported to Mass Wildlife. And they, and they do keep track. All right, um, Francine.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. Um, so I post information very frequently on the Nahat residence page. Um, trying to provide information for people about coyotes and how to coexist with them and facts and things that are from Mass Wildlife based on science. And the thing that happens repeatedly is people, um, I, I don't think they read the information because people and coyotes don't attack people. I spoke with someone today about the incident in Swamp Scott. And what is suspect, and I'm going to put this on the table. Nothing is definitive, but let me put this out there. What I found out today. They suspect that somebody was, that that coyote was looking for food. Someone is feeding them. So this coyote was trying to get the person's attention, expecting it was going to get food. The other piece of information I got was that there was suspicion that it's not even a coyote bite that this person sustained. Um, I think what happens is there's so much hysteria and I, and excuse, I'm sorry if I'm putting people up by using the word hysteria, but if you read the information and you educate yourself about the animals, you, you don't need to be afraid of them. They're not going to grab a child. Not about seventy percent of their diet is rodents. So right now our rabbits are all over the place in Nahat. The coyotes are going to put that in check. They'll also take care of our rats. They're, they are a keystone species. They're essential to creating balance. Wolves don't attack and eat people, completely off from what we've all been taught. That is not true. So it really comes down to education. The other thing people need to know is the attrition rate with pups is something like seventy percent. So most of the pups that are born are not going to survive because they're subjected to the same diseases that dogs are, like distemper, getting hit by cars. So this, that's another thing. So you don't have to worry about we're going to be overpopulated because as Tony has said numerous times, they self-regulate, just like wolves do. And the reason we've got the coyotes is because we wiped out the wolves, what, a hundred years ago? Um, and then the other thing I want to say about, we're talking about trapping. So there's a, Tony, as you've explained, there's a dominant pair and those are the ones that reproduce. If you take out one of the dominant pair, what happens is it messes up the whole balance of the pack. That just basically stays intact and does what they're supposed to do and creates a balance. So if you screw up the dominant pack, it's like with, with wolves, it's like leaving teenagers without parents. And then they get into trouble. They go off, they start reproducing and will end up with an, with a um, an imbalance. And that's where we'll have more problems. So if the people on Mayolus are trapping coyotes, it's going to affect all of us because it's going to mess up the balance that is working itself out. The best thing we can do is coexist with them smartly. Cats need to be indoor pets, not only because of coyotes, but because of songbird populations. Um, and dogs need to be on leashes. I seriously question if a dog is on a leash, a coyote is not going to go after it because they, they can run thirty miles an hour. They can't run and grab a dog on a leash. They are not stupid. So I, I honestly, I doubt that any of those dogs, little dogs that were grabbed were actually on leashes. I don't believe it because it wouldn't happen. So we have to be really smart. We have to educate ourselves and we have an opportunity to coexist. I mean, the coyotes are here to stay. They are not going away. They're in every community in Massachusetts. And if you try to remove them, as Tony said, another pack is just going to find its way here. The best thing we can do is exist with the pack that is already getting to know our, that knows our community. They'll take care of a bunch of things and we just have to be smart and, and be compassionate. These are terrific animals. There, there's so many benefits. And we're not going to get rid of them. They're going to be here. So we need to coexist. Okay, I'll, I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Quick question for you, if I could, you can educate me. Why didn't we have this problem in the past years ago?
Because as I understand it, and I, I don't claim to be a coyote expert, but I did arrange for Pride Project Coyote, a person from there, the same person that the library had, John Margaranas at the Art Nature Event. I had him there giving demonstrations on how to haze a coyote to educate people. Everyone who came by said, I'm okay with the coyotes. Yep, I'm learning to coexist. I came away that day thinking, wow, we've really progressed as a community. So I believe the reason that the coyote population has gotten to where it is, it's because we've wiped out wolves. Wolves were the keystone species. Like if you go to Yellowstone, the wolves, the coyotes stay in check because the wolves are the ones who are in control. The wolves are gone. So now that's allowed the coyotes to move more into the apex predator position. Apex predators are keystone. They're phenomenal, just like white sharks are. Great whites are. We need those. They keep the balance of so much else. So we, we have to educate ourselves and be smart about this.
Thank you.
Tony, any further questions?
Uh, I, if, if there is anyone else that wants to raise their hand.
Okay. So we'll pass on preserving, preserving this point, I take it, because we'll be going into executive session on that shortly. Unless you have something you want to contribute.
I have nothing.
Okay, Town Administrator's report. I think we just had it.
Well, at the last Board of Selectment meeting, the MBTA Better Bus Project was um, brought to our attention by a resident as an item of concern. Um, I just wanted to record that I've reached out to um, the MBTA to ask for them to clarify um, and clearly articulate what the changes are going to be for our community. And urge them that they do that for all community. Currently, the only way to do that is to go onto the website and interact, like there's an interactive map. You have to select a a schedule and it'll show you what the current route is versus the proposed, but it's, it's not, it's not overly simple to understand. So I've asked them to send that information to us. I pass along the comments that the resident provided to us. And I let them know that we would be providing formal comment once we get the information from them. So that's my update on the MBTA Better Bus Project. Um, National Grid work on Castle Road. So National Grid has more or less completed their work from the hot road to Flash Road. The phase two of their project goes from Flash Road to Gardner. Uh, that project will begin probably in the next couple of weeks after school is out. Um, and will go until September, I believe. The um, that area of town, uh, curbside collection for trash occurs on Thursday mornings. Uh, well, on Thursdays, we've asked National Grid if they would delay work until eight-thirty in the morning of, you know, so delay road closure um, and mobilization of equipment until eight-thirty. So during that time, uh, curbside collection can get in there to the community, to that neighborhood before the interruption caused by the National Grid work. So for anybody in that area, like we will put on the website, we'll do a robo-call, we'll continue to um, get, get the information out. Uh, you're, you're going to want to get your trash to the curb before eight-thirty um, in the morning so that it can be collected uh, by waste management.
Okay. Any, any, any comments or questions from the selectmen?
I have none.
Anything to add to the meeting before we go to Citizens Forum? I, I'd just like to ask one question and, and that would be given the national threat that the schools are facing with this gun violence, do we have any feedback or measures we can ask for from the Johnson School Administration just as to what they're doing or what they've done or what they have in place? Lock, lock doors, alerts, et cetera, et cetera, just something like that. Maybe I'm going down the wrong road here, but I just think I'd like to know and we, we might all like to know that the kids are, are safe.
Yes, um, the Johnson School does practice locked doors. Um, we have routine uh, drive-by and check by Nahat Police Department. We have uh, an integrated camera system from the Johnson School to the uh, internal camera system to the police department. And our police department um, works directly with the uh, teachers at the Johnson School on active shooter training. Um, so it's very much at the forefront of their attention.
Excellent. That's great. Okay, we at this point have Citizens Forum. Do we have anybody else there?
Yes, Michelle.
Hey, good evening. Thank you. Um, so thanks, Tony. It was nice to hear that you had followed up with the MBTA on the bus redesign project. Um, I just wanted to follow up from that um, note that I had sent. So I attended the public hearing for the North Shore last Wednesday. Where um, the MBTA went through in detail uh, by community that's going to be affected in the North Shore, what the bus route changes were going to be. Um, they tended to glaze over some communities like Nahat and uh, Danvers and Wenham. And most notably, the town of Wenham has no bus service. The MBTA eliminated it two years ago. And Danvers has been significantly reduced. Their elected and appointed representatives were on the meeting and strongly conveyed the need to bring back that bus service for those locations. Um, in addition, the town of Winthrop was also represented. Um, and they're having significantly cha, challenges as well. So I think Nahat's not alone. Um, I think also with the upcoming plans for affordable housing that the town needs to work on and the changes in the economy. I think this is really something we need to ensure that we don't lose. I think this is really something we need to ensure that we don't lose our position on. Certainly, we don't want to be negatively impacted. Um, we understand like anything else is also the cost benefit analysis regarding these types of projects and decisions. But I think that the fabric of the community is going to change over time and, you know, not everybody is going to be driving into the city. And so they're going to be more economical and hoping that we can, you know, convey that back to the MBTA.
Definitely. I also, thank you, Michelle. I forgot to mention, I spoke with, um, Representative Capano's office about it as well. And, um, they are going to echo, uh, our comments, your comments to the MBTA and had already reached out, um, to one of the deputy commissioners over there, which is the contact that I got and mailed. So, um, I think it's being heard so far. So, uh, we'll continue to keep the pressure on it.
All right. I appreciate it. The one thing I'd say in closing is there's still going to be more public hearings through the rest of the summer. So, you know, I would encourage the board of selectmen or yourselves to check in on one of those meetings to hear. Um, uh, most importantly, uh, you know, uh, you know, credit to the MBTA, they're doing a nice job. They're trying to present the information and have data available to the public. Um, they did a really good job, uh, in the meeting that I intended to have small breakout sessions via Zoom. So residents could share feedback and comments, uh, directly to the project team. And they were very thoughtful and making sure they tried to capture this information and then go back, you know, based on the discussion that was going on. So, um, continually share that and, you know, appreciate, you know, the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep, uh, Kay Alice.
Hello.
Hello.
Say your name and address for the record.
I'm Carrie Alice Collins of twenty-two Breezy Hill Terrace. And, um, I was in contact with you, Tony, about, uh, repainting the Flash Road Playground Shed. And I'd just like to give you all an update on that. Um, Heather Goodwin and I received a generous donation from Sarah Amancio and family of Nahat for the paint. And we've been in touch with Sue, Jen and Kelly at the rec committee. And we will be starting work soon, if that's okay with everyone here. Um, Heather Goodwin and family will be helping. Um, and if anybody remembers what was on it before, um, the rainbow will be back. Um, we painted a really beautiful rainbow that you could see all the way from Kelly Greens and made a lot of people happy and that'll be part of the piece again. Um, we got a lot of good work going on with the, uh, tennis courts and the market, um, going on. And we're really excited to, uh, show our art off to the community and very happy to have the opportunity. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Thank you. And I, I don't know if you heard in the beginning of the meeting, but uh, on Friday at noon, we're going to do a ribbon cutting to, uh, officially open the uh, basketball and tennis courts.
I think that's awesome. Um, as an old townie, I used to play on those in the seventies and eighties and, um, happy to see them back. And I also just want to say a couple of other things since I have you guys. Um, I just want to, um, say I'm going to miss Marty also. He was one of a kind and always friendly to me and my sister and, um, just he was a good soul. And, um, also just another one thing, I vote for, um, hybrids for meetings. I think that, um, public can stay informed that way and it's very important for us to be heard also. So thank you.
All right.
All righty, guys. Great meeting. It was a tough one to get through, but I did. Thanks.
Thank you.
How are you looking, Tony?
Um, let's see, in the comments. Uh, there was a question in the comments about use of a bow and arrow. Um, I answered that one, um, that it is same as discharging a firearm, but it's not allowed in the town of Nahat. Um, there's, is there a Pamela on the call that wants to unmute and, um, I, I don't know if they were raising their hand through the chat.
We have Pamela Duncan. She already spoke with Tom Foster in the phone.
Okay, so, all right, so that might be behind schedule. Um, uh, B Rogers, it said that, um, B, are you still on? You can unmute if you are. Uh, B's comment in the chat was that she had tuned in for an update on East Point, being that it was on the agenda and suggested that it not be on the agenda if it's not going to be discussed. And that's it in the chat. If anybody else is on the call, um, that wants to um, unmute themselves. You can go ahead and do so now.
Okay, hearing none. Hey, Josh, you want to take us into the executive session?
I'm sure.
I'll do that, Josh. I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Northeastern University Marine Science Center, four thirty in the heart road, the heart. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the bo, public body.
Second it. Not to return to open session.
Do you declare? Is that what you were saying?
Pardon?
The chairman declares. Just say I do, I do declare.
I do, sure.
If I didn't say a Dan was about to say.
Okay, uh, will call vote. Josh, had to remind.
I call it that.
Jean Cantia. Thank you all and have a great night.
All right, give me a second to set us up here.